School District. Eight thirty-two, a special meeting on Monday, January tenth at seven oh two P M. Roll call of attendance.
Done.
You. Approval of the agenda is next.
I'd like to amend the agenda.
First, yeah, are you gonna do a motion to? We don't have an agenda. Struggling. So you're making a motion to approve.
To prove the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you. Moved by Julie, seconded by Kelly. Discussion.
Okay, so I would like to amend the tonight's agenda to add COVID update. And make that five B.
My agenda goes from four to seven, so I'm not sure we're putting five B.
Discussion items.
Discussion items.
Okay.
Six somehow.
Yes, so it's seven B, but which is really five B. Got it. Thank you. That's all right, we got it. Um, so you are making a motion to add COVID update as item five B. We have an amendment to the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Kevin, I'm curious if you.
This was me. This was a request by me.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Came from. I didn't have it on the agenda and I needed it.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for adding that.
Great. I just wanted to make sure we weren't surprising the administration and blindsiding them at the table.
Maybe we'll get surprised.
I just wanted to make sure. That's my only question. So first we have the amendment. Any other discussion on the amendment? The first vote on the amendment. All those in favor of amending the agenda to add item five B COVID update, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So now we have an amended agenda. Any discussion on the amended agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to also make an amendment. I'd like to add public forum as number, item number one.
Okay.
Agenda.
I believe in our policy, we do all of that prior to calling the meeting to order. So we've already called the meeting to order, but the board can still take that amendment. All those are, we have a motion to amend the agenda, amend the amended agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it so we can have a discussion.
Okay, so now we have an amendment to the amended agenda to add public comment or comments to the board is what we call it now. Any discussion?
I would just add that. I think given item, agenda item number four, I received many emails over the weekend from people requesting to be heard. And I said I'd do my best to at least try to get a public forum item on the agenda for that purpose. So I think I would, I would ask the the board to recognize that and support my motion.
Any other discussion? I'd like to comment that I guess I would be concerned about adding a public piece to this meeting at this point in time because it doesn't give the full public the opportunity to come and share their opinions. They've had the opportunity through email. We've received emails as you've stated. We don't have a process in place to add it at this point, really. Not saying that we couldn't, but I don't think it's fair to the whole community to put it on an agenda at the last moment like this. If we were brought forward last week, we could have added it very easily when the agenda came out with the items on the agenda. So I guess I'm, I would vote against that amendment.
Respectfully, Madam Chair, I had asked and requested this be added this morning through email to yourself and Superintendent Duffrin. Also follow up text to you and I never heard back. And this was in the morning, so I think it could have been addressed today, but it wasn't.
Right. And in that text exchange, I asked if you want to discuss anything and you said no. And so I didn't follow up with you because you didn't want to discuss anything. I felt as if once the agenda is out and it's the day of the meeting, the agenda belongs to the body and you have the opportunity, as you're doing right now, to make that motion and amendment because I don't think it'd be fair to board members either to blindside them with a change in the agenda. When many board members work full time during the day and won't have an opportunity necessarily to review an amended agenda at that point in time. So in an effort to be fair to my fellow board members and without having that fellow conversation with you because you said you didn't have anything to discuss with me. I didn't do anything at that point. So Kevin and then Kelly.
Just wondering if this is something that, and Paul, I guess I'm kind of looking at you. Is this something that we could put off to a meeting where it actually would be in the plans to do it? Is that something you could wait a bit?
Or the agenda item, I believe there may be, I'm not sure if people are here to speak to the agenda item, item number four. So perhaps we can ask if there are people that are here to speak to that agenda item, but delaying it would defeat that purpose if they're here to speak to that agenda item. But thank you, Kevin.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, so from my knowledge of, you know, public comment that it should tie to something on the agenda, I would have to say that I don't have any problem with the public ever commenting on how they feel about anything at all. I would, we don't ask to respond. We aren't asked to act. We're asked to listen. And so I guess I don't have any problem whatsoever. Especially since like Paul is saying, this is something on this current agenda.
Point of clarification, it's not agenda item number four. It's agenda item number six. I'm sorry, that may make a difference.
Thanks. Go ahead. So I guess, given the fact that this was added on Friday, I I don't, I feel like making it an opportunity now is not too late for the public. I mean, we're all getting this at a la- last minute request, right? Like we, this is coming up very fast, so I don't, I don't really see the harm in letting the public speak. I understand your point that not everyone probably knew they might get that opportunity, but again, it's kind of fast moving. We all got notice of this pretty, pretty recently. And, and in fact, we, you know, just got the on this item, the details yesterday or last night as far as, as, you know, more details about it. So I feel like with things moving the way they are, it's, it would be good to allow people to, to voice their concerns.
How many people, I'm guessing that there's some people there. I would be okay with that, I think.
Any other discussion on the amendment? So the vote right now is on the amendment to add public or comments to the board to the agenda. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, let's do that again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Carries four to two, so we will add it. We will have to, we don't do comments to the board during the regular meetings, so we'll have to take a recess and pause everything and set up for comments to the board then. If because that's, well, now we gotta vote on the agenda. So next, now we have the amended agenda with two additional items. Any other discussion on the agenda? All those in favor of the amended agenda, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. So at this point in time, we'll take a recess. So we can check parliamentary procedure on how to handle this. I'm not exactly sure if that's the right way, so I'm going to call a recess unless anyone objects. And so we can figure out the best way to handle this and hopefully then handle that and come back together. So we are at recess. So welcome back from recess. We'll continue on with the agenda, which is now we're at organizational matters, election of officers. So it's required by statute that each January, the board meet as quickly as possible to establish officers for the, for the year. The Montomedi Board has historically had a meeting in December, an organizational dinner where we have the opportunity to talk with each other and talk about the different officer roles and different committees and things like that. And bring forward a slate of candidates to the board, to this meeting, to help the process go more quickly so we can get to the business of the board. We had that meeting in December, but unfortunately we had one board member not able to make that meeting. And so we were only able to discuss parts of the requirements in terms of officers and committees and such. During that meeting, though, we had a really good discussion about who was interested in, in having some of these positions. We have four positions that we elect. One is chairperson. One is vice chair, one is clerk, and one is treasurer. Up until last year, the vice chair and the clerk were combined position. And so we've had discussions about should it be one position or two positions? The important thing to remember about these positions is that they are officers of the board. They are not positions that have additional power. Each board member has one vote and all items come to the full board for a vote and action. We are very fortunate to have a lot of board members who are interested in these positions, who would like to help the work of the board move forward by taking on the additional roles and responsibilities of those positions. During the meeting in December, we did have a number of people interested in the positions. We had two people interested in chair and some conversations around vice chair and clerk. According to Robert's rules, you can handle the voting of officers in a couple of different ways. We can go through each office and discuss it and do each office and have a vote on each one, or as in the past, we could have a slate put forward. And so I'd like to start this conversation with putting forward a slate as a motion to see if we can quickly move through the organizational matters of the election of officers. So for the slate, I'd like to put forward Stacy Stout as chair for this year. I'd like to put forward Kelly Reagan as vice chair and clerk to put those positions back together. And then I'd like to put Paul Donna forward as our treasurer. So I'd like to make the motion that slate be put forward for officers.
Okay.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second discussion. Oh, sorry.
I just would like to say thank you for nominating me for that position and I would really be interested in taking that role on.
Any other discussion? Kelly.
I would also like to say thank you for putting that forward and also as far as the vice chair versus clerk, is there any reasoning of putting it back together? I know it was separated. I'm just wondering if there was any reasoning now at this point.
So if you look at our policy two oh two about school board officers, right now, the vice chair, it just says all they do is duties of the chair and they've been the chair's temporary absence. So there's really not a lot to do with that position. And we separated it last year because Stacy was interested and Stacy and I've had many conversations about succession planning with the board and who would be the next chair. And she was interested in taking that on to learn about that role. And Julie was interested in staying as clerk. And, and so that was the reason we separated it last year. But usually they're together because there really isn't a lot of work tied to that vice chair piece unless you're working to learn the role of chair.
That's what I thought your answer was going to be. I just wanted to see if that was still the same answer. Yeah.
Any other conversation or discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd also like to say thank you for the nomination for treasurer.
Another discussion. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
All right, so can I ask you questions, Lucy, as I move into this? Okay, so let's move on to committee appointments. We discussed all of these as Lucy described. And so I, I propose that we take those as a slate and do a committee and then we can do advisory boards and governing boards separately or.
Point of order. Go ahead. B, yeah.
Oh, I apologize. Oh. Okay, so we, okay, I skipped over B. So the next agenda item are the salaries of board members and officers. And that is laid out in our policy. Do we make a motion on this or? Okay, I think we have to have a question, correct? So is there a motion?
I'll make that motion. That we adopt salaries of board officers as a part of two oh two school board compensation.
There a second?
I'll second that for discussion.
Questions? Kevin?
So just historical context here, we've always taken the position to look at the average of the nine sixteen, which is the thirteen member districts in the Northeast Metro. And we take that and find the average and that's where we place our compensation. So it, it doesn't change much year to year. If one district moves a bit, that really affects almost not at all. So I don't think compensation has really done much of anything over the sixteen years I've been here. So, but it's a fair, it's a fair way to do it. We felt that by allowing it to be the average of the districts in our area. I mean, it wouldn't be fair to compare us to St. Paul. It's, it's more fair to look at the member districts of nine sixteen in our area.
Any other discussion?
So I think that you will just have to, you know, pull the clerk and vice chair salary back together.
Oh, good point.
It won't be two separate salaries for the two jobs. This time it will just be the one for clerk. Or you would take the more with the vice chair.
Okay.
As opposed to the difference. It was a slight, slight decrease for the clerk from the vice chair. So, so I would assume you would take the, the vice chair salary for the, for the clerk vice chair position.
Or do we know how it was done?
That's how it was done prior.
I, I think that sounds great. Do we need to delineate that or?
Because I think I was that for five years, maybe six, so. It's about fifty dollars or something.
I've realized that was in there, so. Um, okay. Is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair, if I may, just to add additional context for the folks in the audience. So what we're talking about for salaries for the chairperson is the average, again, like Kevin indicated, would be five thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars for the year. For the vice chair, it's five thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars. For treasurer be five thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And for a director, it's five thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. I believe those are the correct salaries. Yep, so.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Eyes have it. Okay, now onto consideration of board member appointments. We have committee appointments, advisory board appointments, and governing board appointments. There are names proposed for each of these already, based on the discussion we had in December. So are there any? Does anyone have a preference in how we move forward? I suggest we take the committee appointments in one block. Does anyone have a motion?
Or do we accept the slate?
So I think that if you're going to move it forward, I think you have to say it all, Kevin. Well, I think that it has to be a matter of records, so everyone can see.
Folks are?
I think so.
All right. So for facilities committee, we've got myself, Julie McGraw, and Kelly Reagan. For finance, we've got Paul Donna, which makes sense, he's treasurer, Kevin Donovan, and Stacy Stout. For personnel committee, we've got Lucy Payne, Julie McGraw, and Stacy Stout. Policy committee, Paul Donna, Lucy Payne, and Stacy Stout. For advisory boards, we have AMSD, Lucy Payne. For MSBA, the Legislative Committee Liaison, Julie McGraw. And for the Minnesota State High School League, we have Kelly Reagan. And on the governing boards, the Education Equity Alliance, and I will serve on that if passed. We have the Montomedi Area Educational Foundation, otherwise known as MAF. And we have Barb Duffren.
Kelly Reagan.
And Kelly Reagan. Okay, we need to put that in there. We have Metropolitan Educational Cooperative Services, ASQ, Stacy Stout. And Northeast Metro nine sixteen, Kevin Donovan.
Second that motion.
Do you want to say the ones on the bottom two?
Can we work tonight? All right, let's see here. We've got the calendar committee as needed. We have Community Education Advisory Committee, Julie McGraw. District Curriculum Advisory Committee, Kelly Reagan. PTO, Paul Donna. Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee, Stacy Stout. Special Education Advisory Committee, Kelly Reagan and Paul Donna. Or Paul Donna.
I second that, Kevin.
Okay, we have a motion from Kevin, seconded by Julie. Any discussion?
You want to figure out which of, so is that what you're doing over there?
Yeah, so, um, I guess for discussion for special education advisory. So both of us are down there. I'm, I'm interested in special education advisory. That work just began and really didn't get very far yet in the one year that I've been on the board. And so I am still interested in continuing to do that work. And I know, Paul, you said possibly elementary PTO. You were kind of asking like about maybe swapping that.
I'm concerned with the time.
Yeah, I'm concerned with the time commit myself of the number of things I have here on the list and being once per month. I think the frequency of that, I worry about the conflicts I might have.
I'll stick with, I'll stick with that then. And then I'll just and then we'll have, you'll, you'd like to stay on the special education and I'll remove mine over there.
I did. So now, I, okay, does someone want to propose an amendment to the motion?
Whatever you just talked about, you could use.
Um, sure. I'd like to propose an amendment to the motion and the amendment to the motion is that under the Special Education Advisory Committee that Kelly Reagan would be listed there instead of, right now it was proposed as Kelly Reagan or Paul Donna. Is that the amendment?
So, yes. Okay, so now then I think it's all straight. We need to vote on the amendment.
So just to say though, you know, if you can't make it, I mean, it's not uncommon for us all to say, hey, I need help. I just put out the call to the board members and any of us fill in at any one of these meetings except for nine sixteen, they have a rule. So it's not unusual for any of us to fill in at any of these. So.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye. Any discussion on the underlying motion?
It's a large motion, Kevin. Thank you for reading it.
Okay. Then we'll take all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those? The ayes have it. Agenda. Discussion items. It looks like we have Jeff.
For the stadium improvements.
Jeff's like, what am I talking about?
Aaron Forsyth as well to talk about this.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yes, we, so Mr. Forsyth is here with me. We, we'd like to ask the board to consider some safety upgrades, some improvement, improvements at the, at the varsity baseball field. So Aaron's going to talk a little bit about the scope of the project and I'll finish up with timeline. We're looking at this as a project for for the next fiscal year out of our capital LTFM budget. So, so I'll talk a little bit about timeline and funding and Aaron will talk about.
Yep. Scope. Yep, I appreciate your time. So when Jeff mentions improvements to the baseball facilities, actually in the school's eyes, it's a safety improvement to the stadium facility. Specifically, spring activities that we have either on the track or on the turf field at the stadium. Currently, we have inadequate fencing and no netting between the baseball field and activities that are taking place on the stadium. Five, sometimes six days a week. So the project scope would be removing the existing chain link fence that's at the backstop and on the first baseline, which would be the east side of the stadium. And then putting in new chain link fence, an adequate backstop and safety netting down the first base line of the, of the stadium. Currently, what we have, the existing backstop is not adequate. It's, it's too short and it's typical of what you would see at a little league field. And there is nothing to prevent ball balls going on to the stadium or track. And specifically, when you get into the specifics of it, the majority of, of players are right-handed and anytime you have a check swing at a baseball game, the trajectory of those balls are exiting the baseball field and entering the stadium are dangerous. And it's, it really is a hold your breath moment. So that is why we're looking to improve this and, and make that a safer experience for our, our student athletes that are participating in track and field and lacrosse in the spring. There is a possibility of adding netting on the third baseline as well. We're talking about eight feet of chain link fencing with thirty-two feet of netting on top. And, and then two hundred feet extending up to two hundred feet down the first baseline. Again, really, this is optically, it's looking, it will look like an improvement to the baseball facility, but for all intent purposes, it's there for the activities. It would be there for the activities that are on the stadium and track. Jeff, anything else?
I think that covers the, any questions?
Scope of the project?
Just one. So when you talk about the safety of the track, we're talking about the first, the, the netting and fencing along the first base, right on that side, the third is, aren't all those balls going up? Is that more for the spectators so that they?
Yeah, that's, that is a wooded property that does not belong to the district. Yeah, the woods does not belong to the school.
That netting, then we could potentially have, I'm trying to picture it, we could potentially have spectators along that line too safely, potentially, right? That would be, okay, thanks.
I have a question. So the netting, where I understand that it's facing where the, the track is. Does it also extend over to where there's the, the bleachers? To, to, will, would there be an over, a netting over that piece as well?
Yeah, so if you're if you're at the baseball field going down the first baseline, there are bleachers on the east side of the stadium and that netting would protect anyone in those bleachers.
Are those bleachers in front of, are those in the same direction as where the, the track is? I'm trying to picture, if we're talking about two different areas.
Yeah, maybe we are.
I can't, the bleachers on the visitor's side of.
Like if you're at a soccer game or a football game, lacrosse game, it's on the middle school side, is, are those the bleachers you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this netting would provide safety for anyone in those bleachers. Paul, you got a question?
So there's, there's bleachers along the, currently along the first base foul line that are actually watching the stadium events. So they would be protected. The bleachers, if I'm correct, the bleachers at the baseball field are directly behind the backstop. The backstop, with an improvement of the backstop, would probably protect those people.
Yeah.
High enough.
Okay.
And so, and for the sake of transparency. Yeah, and so, and for the sake of transparency, the trajectory that a ball would land in the bleachers for baseball and the time it takes to get there, generally, it's a very low risk. What is a risk to our students are the kids that are practicing or competing in the field events, which is further back beyond the backstop. And that's our number one concern. There is, and the existing backstop just doesn't go high enough. It's, it's probably it might be smaller than what you'd see at Southwest Park.
So my question is.
Look through all of this in the materials, and I've had kids who've chased hundreds of baseballs out of that stadium with that, with the lack of netting and the very short backstop. My question is about the improvements with the netting in the backstop. Maybe I missed it and I apologize if I did. What's the new height of the new backstop with the netting? And is that, is that changing? The, the whole backstop is being replaced or just the netting?
The, the plan, what we'd like to do is the entire backstop and then provide netting down the first baseline and that's going to be forty feet. Yep.
And that would then help with the, because not only do they go out down the first baseline, they also go out ball balls behind and down kind of directly behind home plate and also on.
Okay. Yeah, so the, the backstop itself. I mean, do I have the? So the backstop, so this is the area where we have kids in the field events that are vulnerable. Right? We can't just replace half of this. We need to replace entire backstop for function. So that would be going from here to here. And then netting down this first baseline, which would come down to here. And the trajectory of a right-handed batter check swinging in a line drive foul ball is, that's where we have an obligation to make sure our kids have a safe experience on the stadium.
Have we had any student spectators hit by wayward balls in the past?
I've been told yes. And I've seen enough close calls and my short time here, that they're hold your breath moments.
And I guess I mean, how long have we been aware that there has been a safety issue out in the baseball field slash track?
It's been on, it's been on my radar since about the, what was the season that we didn't have spring sports? Twenty, twenty twenty?
Where I'm going with this is we have a facilities committee that's met really what, three times a, a year or so? And we, we learned of this project kind of just at a meeting, it was kind of a, by the way, we've got this thing that's coming forward and I immediately was struck by this idea that if we have the safety committee or the safety, the facilities committee meeting. And this has been a problem for quite a while. Why is it that we're just now learning of it? And I mean, that's, that's my concern. I'm not arguing that this isn't a good thing to do because I've, I've been hit by wayward baseball and it does hurt. Not here, not here, but somewhere. And to be clear, and, but I'm just, I'm just kind of concerned about why we haven't the facilities committee hasn't really learned of this up until just this past month.
Yeah. And, and I know that I can answer that. We, I got involved with this with Aaron in July and thought this is an important project that the district needs to tackle. Why it wasn't on the agenda or on our list of priorities in the past? Not sure.
I, I guess I would just like to propose that we, if we have anything else that is of concern like this, that we bring it forward to the facility.
So, you know, and as you, as you all recall, we brought in a firm to to do an inventory, do a kind of a mass update of all of the district needs at all of the sites. So we really haven't had anything like that in place prior to this.
Don't, don't get, I'm certainly in favor of safety. So, yeah.
If I have a question and that was, I, I know a little bit more about this because of having kids in baseball and I, I believe Kevin, that this started as a RBI club fundraiser, that they're hoping to self-fundraise for this and be able to pay for these improvements that they wanted. And so, I, I think maybe when the cost was maybe a lot more than they anticipated, they weren't able to then even think about the project. I'm just making that, I guess that trying to put that connection together. I'm not sure if that's a hundred percent accurate, but I think that the RBI club started to help fundraise for things like this. But the question I have though, in the presentation, and maybe you're getting there, but the funding of this by using operating capital and LTFM dollars saying that the turf replacement then for the football field would possibly be pushed out then to twenty twenty-four to be able to pay for this project. And my question I would have is, so what part potentially would the RBI club still be contributing to this so that the turf replacement did not have to get pushed off?
Um, yeah, if I can, if we go back to the PowerPoint. So, you know, let me just, I'll run through the schedule. So if the board approves this, we'd want to get authorization to, God forbid, January, February kind of timeframe. To get this work done this summer and completed by the fall, we would like to award a contract to the two, we're going to put this up for public bids. So we'd award the contract, March kind of timeframe. And, and then schedule construction in the summer. So on the bottom there, I talk about how it would be funding. So we would use LTFM funds and operating capital. Not sure how many LTF, till we get the bids, exactly what that dollar amount will be in each of those categories. And so, we estimate right now, it costs about three hundred and fifty thousand. So we, we, when we look at the project scope down the third baseline, that's where we'd want a contribution from the, from the baseball, that baseball donation. I think that's about seventy thousand, but until we get bids, we're not sure. So fifty to seventy thousand, I think, for for the fencing down the, down the third baseline. As far as turf, we have that evaluated each year. We are in our eleventh year of the, of the turf. Most districts, it's in the twelfth or thirteenth year that they need to replace. So we think, and we've been told by our turf person, we can get another year out of our existing turf. So, so, yep, we do push that back to twenty twenty-four to accommodate this project.
Okay, so, so then what we're doing will be above and beyond regulation for the heights of these fences because of the unique situation. We will be up to whatever the OSHA code is for
Yeah.
baseball fences.
I don't know.
Is there some regulation?
Districts, but what we've seen is anywhere from thirty-five to forty feet.
Because we all heard about this happening in the Major League Baseball. So there has to be some kind of a safety regulation. So we're meeting whatever the rules are.
We all heard about this.
Well, well, didn't we? I don't know. I read about it, even though I'm not a baseball person. I read about it.
Trying to turn line drives and pop-ups.
Right. And.
A lot less, a lot less dangerous.
So, so when you call it safety dollars, we don't have a Title IX concern about about equity in girl's sports?
We have, we have boys and girls track, boys and girls cross.
So you're, but you're not saying it's a baseball expense. You're saying it's for the track.
So I, I wouldn't be here asking for it if the, the track teams and lacrosse teams weren't competing and practicing on the facility that's adjacent to the baseball field. That's, that's the real reason that this has to be done. And, and when we ask about, that's a great question. What's standard? What's code to it? I don't know the history behind how the, the field was placed there, but I, I think that's really the question is why are we putting a baseball field right next to the stadium?
In the middle of everything. Yeah.
But, but this is the, the most efficient and, and cost-effective option to keep it safe.
So, and my last question is, so then, so then we need a, a formal agenda to change our long-term facilities maintenance plan and does that need approval from the Department of Education?
Oh, you, I, I thought I'd showed you the, this is going to be FY twenty-four. Or FY twenty-three, this project. So that's, that's next year's.
It'll be on next year.
So the board, yeah. I mean, you did do a ten-year plan, but it's pretty generic and it's, it shows site projects. So you could easily fit this within that.
But we, we will do this and do it specifically when you do the new LTFM.
And this isn't coming for a vote today. It's, this is a discussion today. Okay. Asking about the process going forward, so. So we've identified a problem that has liability to it, right? If someone now is hit by a ball, we have huge liability here. Will there be something put in place to mitigate that liability until this work can be done if it's approved by the board?
Um, I'll let.
I, I've worked very hard with with other school ladies and really worked to, to put the puzzle together scheduling-wise. The reality is it's not sustainable with rain dates and spring weather. But we've taken every reasonable measure to make sure that we don't have kids on the same place or there at the same time. It's just, it's it's not feasible or realistic for that to be sustainable every season. There's going to be reschedules and, and when you throw in other reasons why games are getting postponed and rescheduled now, it's just, it's not feasible. So, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't think that our, I, I don't know, I'm not an expert on liability, but I don't think our liability, just because we're going to do something to fix a problem, that it won't change what our liability may have been three years ago.
But now we're aware of it. And as a board member, I'm concerned about that liability and that we have a plan in place. So we are, we won't run into problems now that we've identified it. So you're saying that it's all taken care of because of scheduling that you've done and there's no risk for students this year.
We have switched, we are, I have switched every single game that we can to make sure that we don't have baseball games going on at the same time as a track meet or lacrosse games. Worked really hard to, to make that happen.
So you said as many as you can. So there are still some that overlap or there is no overlap?
None.
There are none? Thank you.
Questions? Thank you, Jeff and Aaron.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are action, no, we've got five B, the COVID update. Okay, thank you. And thanks for adding this to the agenda. I had a few questions, a few of you had asked me some questions. And so I put together, oh, sorry, sorry, I need this microphone. So I put together this presentation, some of which it will be reiterating or bringing back some things that I talked about in December. And some are regarding the updates we had this week with the new CDC guidance on quarantine. So I am going to just briefly give you the isolation quarantine update we sent out. Sent out the update on Friday and we have started that today with our new quarantine guidance. I'll also share the COVID nineteen data because that's something that people have asked about and I typically share including the data in Washington County and Monomeda Public Schools. And then I've had a few questions about distance learning and when it would be that we would consider distance learning. And so I'll just give you those distance learning considerations and try and do my best to give you the state of our situation currently. So I know that there's quite a bit of information here, but again, this is information we said, we sent out on Friday to our families and staff regarding isolation and quarantine update. This is, since the beginning of the year, we've been talking about following our public health guidance. And so we, and so we're continuing to do that. And the new guidance came out from the CDC and I think the announcement was on the twenty-seventh of December. And we waited for MDH to get clarification from the CDC regarding the implications for school districts. And MDH did say they would be following the CDC guidance. And so this week, our staff has been working to get that clarified. And so once we had that, we put something out on Friday regarding that, that guidance and contacted families of students who are already in, under quarantine to let them know that their new return date based on this, based on this guidance. And I'll also mention, I did put the quote from the CDC. The change is motivated by the science demonstrating that majority of the transmission occurs early in the course of illness. And generally in the one to two days prior and two to three days after. So, so really what we're doing is similar to the protocols that we've already been using. And simply shortening the quarantine period if the student is not symptomatic is, or test negative if it's a close contact in the household. So I just would want you to know that that is why the, the change is in place. So we did, we did update that. We have those details. And then I, I'll just, important to note here. Well-fitting masks are required for those six to ten days afterward. So typically, in the past, there had been a ten-day quarantine. Now it's, it's potentially a five-day quarantine. Again, if there's, they're not symptomatic. But masks are still required, required for those ten days. We have the, the universal masking requirement currently. And so that shouldn't be an issue for students in school. And it is the case, this is a clarification also. We had a couple of questions over the weekend about this. We do still have that universal masking requirement. So there, if there's a close contact in school, there is not the, the quarantine during that time. I, I can, I don't know if, I, I do have this here available that we can click and look at the, at the data table that was sent out on Friday, if you have any questions about that. And I could talk you through it, but again, essentially, it's the same as what we had been doing with a ten-day quarantine and now it's a five-day quarantine. Do any of you have questions about it?
What you saw on Friday?
Okay. Our, oh, I just, I just want to restate your point you made because I just wanted to be really clear since I had a lot of questions from others. If a student isn't vaccinated and they are exposed at school with the mask policy in place and they were exposed while they were wearing their mask, that student does not have to quarantine.
Right, so that practice has not changed at all. The only practice that's changed is the, the quarantine length. Potentially, as long as they're, students are, and staff are, have, their symptoms have resolved. I'm just going to share this again. This is something I share with you regularly. It's your, it's the COVID data. And I want you, the importance, I've shared this with you before, the importance of monitoring Washington County transmission data. You can see up there in the, in the top, that's our seven-day moving average from September through January. And corresponding down below are our cases week by week. Tried to make that as clear as possible. That yellow bar right there does represent two weeks. It's just that we took all of the data, the nurses collected all the data that was reported over break. And then included the new cases that were reported this past week and put them together. It was too much data to sort through as it was. They had a lot of work to do to help people figure out their quarantine. So I just want you to know that that bar does is not the same interval. But that, we did have, we do have quite a few, our cases are up. It's definitely the case that our cases are up in schools right now. And so I would want you to know that. Again, that bar does not represent the same interval. We do have the district dashboard, which we update weekly to make sure everyone knows what's happening in each building. And again, when you click on that, I will tell you, it looks, it looks very different, but we tried to make it as clear as possible, but that's for two weeks. So the question about distance learning considerations, I actually had a very similar slide in December, but I was calling it quarantine. I was talking about how we determine quarantines, but it wasn't clear that we
I was talking about how we determine quarantines, but it wasn't clear that we meant the same thing. So I'm changing the language. But this is information that I shared with you in December. So at this point, we really have, we have not quarantined any classrooms or cohorts or grade levels or schools um, in any place in our, our district at this point. We do, so we look at the elementary level. We had questions about the elementary level back in December. If we see a number of cases in one classroom, we do look at that classroom and try and determine that, can we find, or do we have evidence that there's transmission going on within the classroom? And we work with our nurse, we work with the teacher, we work with public health to determine if that's a classroom that we should quarantine or shift to distance learning. I'll say it that way. So again, when we decide if we need to shift to distance learning, we would be looking at classrooms, cohorts, grade levels. Uh, it may be that we'd have to go to a full building. Uh, I'd say that that would be more likely in a, in a place where maybe we have more mixing at like at the secondary level. So that would be, but we're not at that point. I'll say that, um, we would be looking at distance learning, uh, for a shorter period of time than we had talked about before. It would be really, a lot of it would be based on, I, on staffing frankly. So one of the things that, um, that we see in a number of districts that have had moved to distance learning has really been based on staffing and the impact on sta, of staffing on the ability, in our ability to fill absences. I mean, maintain those staffing levels. So that is something that we, we really need to look at. And in a typical year, we have staffing stressors. That's not unusual. We have days where we'd have a really, we'd need a, you know, we'd have a lot of substitutes in the building or substitute. Um, classes can't be filled. We have additional stressors because of quarantines. And so that is something that we feel more, and it is the case that, um, our staff have been filling in during their prep periods and that, that's also something, um, that's been a stressor this year. And, um, we have reached out to the community, you might have seen on Friday, a call for, for additional substitutes. And we have some, some people that, that came out of the woodwork to come and help us out, which is fabulous. And at the same time, we don't want situations where student experiences are a subs, you know, substitutes constantly. So we have to balance that. So as of today, we're okay with our staffing. I just would want you to know that that's something that we have to keep an eye on. And, um, right now with cases spiking, that could affect us. But again, what we would look at is a short quarantine. So for example, maybe we have to have a long weekend where natural, or a short time and distance learning, where maybe we have to have a long weekend. Where students are in, in distance learning, but we're not looking at an extended period of time. We're basing it on our staffing levels, i- if that's helpful. Do you have questions about that? Cause I know a few of you had questions over the weekend. Yeah.
I have a question. Um, and I know the board and the administration, the teachers, the number one goal is to keep the kids in school. Regarding the substitute, what, just quickly, what are the qualifications for a substitute?
We have our HR director in the audience who could step up to the mic and talk a little bit about substitute qualifications.
It depends on what kind of substitute they're going to be. So for like a short call sub, they just need their degree. And then they work through, um, teachers on call, which is our temporary staffing agency. So all of our subs for teachers and paras are through teachers on call. They also have a tiered licensure in Minnesota. So we go look at a tier one through a tier four, depending on if you've done your prep program, if you've graduated. So there's different tiers that individuals can apply through for, through Pilsby. So lots of different options. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Other questions on this? I do, I do want to just reiterate to everyone to, to just acknowledge that our staff have done an amazing job of filling in to, to make it so that we can staff our building. So I, I see it regularly, regularly, the call for, um, subject unfilled subs and having teachers who have come in and fill in. I see at the elementary level, everyone moving things around to make things, to make things work. So I do want you to know that our staff have been working really hard to keep kids in school and to keep, uh, learning in person. So I, I, I really need to acknowledge that.
Sure.
I see, feel my wheels turning.
Yep.
A little bit, but obviously with my career being in education as well, I see this every single day as well. And what I have worried about our teachers in Madam Edi is exactly that. Of at what point I, I ultimately, we've talked about, we want kids to stay in school. We want, we know that they learn best when they're face to face. And, um, what I worry about again, what you brought up is having a new sub, especially in secondary. If you have a new sub on a, let's say a teacher's out for four days and you have a new sub for all four days or, and so I just want to acknowledge what you're saying and say it a second time. I think it's worth repeating that. It's asking an awful lot of our teachers to give up their prep hour time and time and time again. The exhaustion level that places on them to then do all of their planning in the evenings and not have that sub time. And then also if you are sick to have those sub plans filled, not even if you're just sick, but obviously if your kid is sick and you have to stay home. And I just, I just want us to keep thinking about the quality of education we're getting in person to make sure that that's not suffering. Because I'm probably one of the biggest proponents of let's keep kids in school, but not at the cost of them having a bad educational experience. Because not only do they have a different teacher who maybe isn't prepared to teach that class. Because that just is the nature of where we're at. And then also just the exhaustion of our teachers being asked to do so much. So I just wanted to say it a second time.
And I appreciate that. Thank you. So again, just to reiterate our commitment to, to safety and learning in person, we do have, these are the, these are the actions we're taking in order to, to make this happen, including the mitigation efforts that we have access to COVID nineteen test, testing. We do have quite a few options for how students and staff can, uh, can access testing, including the, um, rapid tests that we can send home. And then we also have partnered with White Bear Lake, uh, to be able to offer an additional testing site. Again, we respond to the new information. So the shortened quarantine and isolation guidelines were new and we responded to those because they were in line with the public health guidance, which we said we would follow. We have our COVID coaches that you've heard about, providing support to students. Uh, transportation, our transportation has been working really hard. They've brought in drivers from Milwaukee to help us out when we had, um, staffing shortages because Milwaukee was in distance learning. So they were able to pull some of their staff from Milwaukee. And again, I'll just reiterate our staffing, uh, although it's a, it's something, but it is something we are watching. So that is my COVID nineteen update. Yes.
Wanted to call out the, um, I had a, one of my kids had to be home in quarantine and the COVID coach was fantastic with helping, um, not only offering Google meets during the, um, before and after school, but also well into the evening to help stay caught up. So I think that's a great resource for us. I was really impressed with her being, helping, uh, my middle school son with math. And so I can only speak to my personal experience, but I think that's great. And then, uh, this call out, cause Kevin likes to bring up a lot of times things he reads. And one of the things that I saw that I thought was fantastic tonight, that I just read today about a school district that's struggling with staffing for custodians, that they offered students to take on um, ways to help out and, and it was a kind of internship and on the job type experience. And they kind of had a part-time job, um, along with that. So something for us to think about. Do we have to get creative down the road? I thought it was a great article. So if anyone wants to check it out.
I think it was in today's, uh, MSBA. I think that's where I read it too today.
That's where I saw it. I don't remember. I saw it somewhere today.
I'm sure a question for Barb. Um, forgive me, I, I don't remember where, where we might be at with contact tracing. Does the new guidelines impact that? Is it relevant anymore?
We don't need to kind, again, because our very universal masking, that's not something that we need to do. Um, our quarantines are related to household close contacts. That's really what we look at.
Were we not looking at hiring somebody to do?
Thank you. So we are hiring, uh, we are hiring a COVID nineteen coordinator and that person, that job is going to evolve. Right now it's a, a job that really needs to support our nursing staff. And so that person, I believe will be starting tomorrow potentially to support our, our nursing staff with all of that they need to manage. And then we'll see from there. Uh, depending on where our employee, um, vaccination and, and testing goes. There might be some things that are needed there.
Thank you.
Thank you Barb for that update. Sure. Now moving on, action items. We have on the agenda approval of policy four ninety-one, the employee mandatory COVID nineteen vaccination or testing.
Thanks. And I'm going to ask Nicole Flessner, um, our HR director to, to just go over the highlights of why we're bringing this to you. So that we have just kind of an overview to start with. And then because she's been immersed in all the details for so long, she can answer some questions you may have.
Sure. Thanks Barb and school board. So I'm going to just introduce real quickly, um, the policy that you guys reviewed today, four ninety-one. So thank you for doing that. Cause there are a lot of details, which is basically the employee mandatory COVID vaccination, testing and face covering is one of our longer titles. Um, but M S, MSBA, um, put together a policy, um, in the event that Minnesota, Minnesota OSHA adopted the federal E T S, which is the emergency temporary standard, and they did back on January third. So that was pretty recent. MSBA drafted two policies for districts to consider both four ninety and four ninety-one. Four ninety is a mandatory COVID vaccination policy. And then policy four ninety-one, which you guys reviewed for tonight, requires employees to either get vaccinated or you can elect to undergo regular COVID nineteen testing and then wear face covering at work, which we talked about earlier. Um, there were a couple of clarifications made to this policy, which were recommendations by legal counsel. And one of the ones I wanted to highlight was, um, with the deadlines in the mandate, there is some district flexibility in the policy. So that if something happens where the deadlines are delayed or the policy becomes no longer enforceable, that gives the district the flexibility not to have to move forward with either vaccination status records or also with the COVID nineteen testing. So I wanted to highlight that as well, that this policy gives the school district that flexibility. Um, Minnesota OSHA stated also, there are some timelines in the policy that you read. So Minnesota OSHA stated they will not cite citations or fines as long as school districts are showing good faith effort in the implementation of the E T S. So, um, what we're asking the board to do then with policy four ninety-one is to adapt this policy so that we can continue our work in the event that if the Supreme Court, which held the hearing on Friday, makes a decision soon. Uh, this policy allows us to be compliant with OSHA and in case this is still enforceable, which it, which it is now. So that is kind of a brief overview of four ninety-one.
So again, that we, the district has an obligation to follow this because we are a, because we employ more than a hundred, we have more than a hundred employees. So that's why this is part of what we need to move forward with under Minnesota OSHA.
School districts and employers, yep. Many, any district with a hundred or more staff. Yep. That's, that's probably the easier detail is that we definitely fit that definition.
The policy is written, that was written, it was by MSBA, the, the additions in red were the ones that we, we, um,
Recommended by legal counsel. Yep. So we were provided MSBA's model policy, which you, um, have read. And then we also had one provided by your legal counsel, very similar policies, but sometimes you'll see some different language. So we looked at both and then the underlying or redline sections that Barb mentioned are clarifications from our attorney. Some of them are pretty self-explanatory, but I did want to highlight the flexibility that it gives us in case this is not enforceable. It allows the district to not have to move forward with certain sections of the policy. Just because we adopt it doesn't mean we have to move forward if there's a decision made by the courts where it's no longer enforceable. So I think that's really important to note that flexibility.
And so I would, I'm going to phrase it a little bit differently and just say that, um, the district would not move forward. It's not that we just would have to, it's that we would not move forward if it is not, um, enforceable against the district at this time.
And I think the language in there that we put is that if and when the mandate becomes legally enforceable.
But we heard today that E T S is an act of law at this time.
Right.
So, um, it was also recommended by MSBA at a, at a session today that we clarify who is an employee. So it's clear to everybody. And so, um, I asked, so you had asked that question as you're listening to MSBA today. And so Nicole, in particular, one of the questions is the school board members, are they, do we typically consider them employees as we work on this?
Right. And we haven't, we haven't included them, board members in terms of either public data requests or compliance reports. Um, and I know I was on that same webinar today too. And the attorney mentioned that hopefully clarification, because the testing mandate wouldn't be until the February ninth deadline. He had mentioned also whether Minnesota OSHA would clarify further elected officials is what it's called, not just necessarily school board members. And clarify, I think a little bit more on what elected officials is going to mean in terms of the testing policy. But we haven't considered school members employees here. So we may need to talk with legal counsel if further clarification is made by Minnesota OSHA.
So I was on the webinar as well. And, um, what I got out of what the attorney said was this idea that there are certainly some gray areas when it comes to employees, who, how do we define employees, substitute being one? And then the school board members being the other. And, uh, his, this guy, I forget his name, his suggestion was, um, that the districts make a good faith effort to adhere to policy four ninety-one by including school board members in the interpretation. In other words, the idea was if, if this does, it is currently the law because of the Sixth Circuit Court pending what the, the Supreme Court does with it. Um, but he thought that the idea was if we modeled that, then if this does, uh, stay, uh, as, as law by the Supreme Court, that would be a favorable thing should Minnesota OSHA come through and, and do the audit. So, anyway, that's what I heard out of the, the presentation today.
Me too. Thanks, Kevin. So that's just it. Who makes it clear? Does the board make it clear? Does the lawyer make it clear? Do we make it clear in a discussion doing, by adding it to our meeting minutes? That we will hold ourselves to a standard that we're expecting our employees to have? Who, who makes that? I mean, is it a discussion at the board table or what do you think?
Would be my thought that we want to model what we have. All of the associates, teachers, staff, admin, custodial clerical, everything that we model that. So, um, that would be my suggestion. But on the, on the other part about thinking about that is, is there something Nicole that, um, we have to be careful of if we haven't classified ourselves as employees up until this point? Does that change something else there as, as a part of our classification? So I just, I think there probably need to be some legal.
Nicole, is it possible, since testing wouldn't need to happen until February if it happens? Our next board meetings at the end of January, is it possible that we could, um, just bring, come back to that and, um, address both substitutes and, um, board members at that time? And, and define employee at that time for contractors.
Contractors aren't included.
Right. And I think what Kevin's talking about from the presentation, substitute would be like an example would be if we have a clerical substitute not hired to an independent contractor, we may have some folks that come in and sub on a random basis for, um, the front office, for example. So that would be someone we employ that a independent contractor wouldn't. Um, but we would consider them employees anyway. So. But our teacher subs through teachers on call and para subs would not be part of that employee definition.
Teachers on call would be issuing the paycheck to the substitute teacher, correct?
Correct.
And we get a W two. We've just talked about that tonight, what our compensation is. We get a W two. So I, I think we need to.
Yeah.
Something to dig into.
Okay. So yeah.
For next time.
Yep. Yep.
Are there any other questions for Nicole?
And I'm sure I have a number of questions regarding the policy. I think that Nicole and or Barb can answer. Is this the proper form to, to ask those questions now?
Sure.
For a couple, I'll just start from the top here. And I did participate in that webinar, also listened in on Friday to one and there is a lot of gray area and there's a lot of unanswered questions that people have. One thing that's not clear to me, perhaps you have an answer. Do the, do the respective bargaining units need to approve this policy, approve of this policy? I do remember reading some information related to there may be exposure related to potential discipline related to the bargaining units and having to negotiate that. So have the, I guess the question is have the bargaining units reviewed this policy and are there any concerns or comments from the leaders of those respective groups?
We haven't gotten any concerns from the respective leaders of those groups. We wouldn't necessarily have to negotiate the policy. This is enforceable under OSHA. But to your question in terms of discipline, we would want to work with our local bargaining groups in terms of if we had situations where employees were not following the policy. Then I would work them, work with them closely on a case by case basis of those situations. So the discipline part would pertain to the CBA or the collective bargaining agreement. So that's what I would work real closely with the unions on.
Thank you. So it's my understanding that the only per the policy right now, the only requirement for an employee that does not adhere to the policy would be removal from the school upon learning of their non-compliance, correct?
Correct. If they did not have an unvaccinated employee, if they did not have a test result every seven days. Would then not be able to return until they provided proof of that test. Is that what you're talking about? Okay.
Yeah. Then follow up to that. Is there, I, I don't remember reading, has the, does this policy contemplate discipline for employees who do not follow the policy beyond removal from the, from school?
You know, there could be provisions in the collective bargaining agreement where an employee may want to request a leave of absence, for example. Or time off, for example. So then we would look at what part, what bargaining group that employee is in and consider some options for them. So we, and also what we talked about today in that webinar too, was there's different levels of discipline that we could enact. And there are some concerns if you're looking at unpaid time, for example. Or discipline, including like up to and including termination. So those would be things that if I were in that situation with somebody that wasn't compliant, I would work with legal counsel and the union right away before going to more of those severe, like severe approaches. So.
So just to clarify, this policy, we, we don't even know
Yeah.
if anyone removed is going to be paid or not paid. We don't know if they're going to be subject to losing their job, correct? We, we don't, we do not know that as of now. Okay. Thank you. Question, do, are, I'm assuming that private, because private businesses are subject to the same one hundred employee requirement, are private schools such as Hill Murray subject to this? Do you know?
That I don't know. I was solely trying to figure it out for us. Yeah. To be honest, I didn't call them, but.
I think Kevin.
Yeah.
My understanding is that it, it's federal money. If, if an organization receives federal money, that's when this really comes into play. So if Hill Murray is receiving federal money, then I would assume that they'd have to as well.
Is that correct? Because I thought this is an employer mandate. So whether that implies to all employers who have over one hundred employees, I don't think it has anything to do with federal funding.
I, I don't think so either, but I don't, I guess I'd have to look. I don't know. I don't know it well enough to know that part.
I don't know anything about the funding part. I was thinking along the lines of Stacy that it's regarding your employee count. Private or public, but I don't know about.
There's two issues between, before the Supreme Court right now. The other one is with the, the medical facilities, that is tied to federal funding because of Medicaid.
Thanks.
Two more questions. Thank you for your patience. I appreciate the clarification, the policy regarding this policy only becomes effective and legally enforceable should. I think I was reading it correctly. Thank you.
So it's effective, you know, whatever date, it says effective February ninth, two thousand point two, or the date on which mandatory testing requirement in the ETS becomes legally enforceable against the school district, whichever occurs later.
To add on to that, is there any provision, I don't recall related to when the ETS or this would be removed or this policy would, would be inactive? Is there any clarification in writing? If this policy was enacted and put in place, at what point does this policy get removed? In the future?
They, whenever the ETS is no longer legally enforceable against the district that, so that is the reason we put that in there so that if it, depending on how it changes. It's in order for us to follow that law.
And under purpose, section one, they do talk about the school district's intent is that this policy meet and should be consistent with procedures mandated by OSHA. So if, if there were changes to that, to me, this means this policy is being governed by what OSHA has in terms of the ETS. So I know when we were talking about purpose, that was the intent that they meant for school districts with them.
Yeah. And then I believe I know the answer, but who, who would be responsible for the cost of the tests?
The weekly testing? So right now we would provide staff, we're planning for providing staff with those tests. We also have the option of Barb mentioned in the COVID update, there is a partnership with White Bear Lake Schools. Our employees would also have the option to do their weekly testing there, not necessarily here in the building. Employees would also have the option, this would not be the cost issue you're talking about, but they would have the option to test on their own. And then submit those test results to me in a confidential way, but it wouldn't have to be necessarily at the school district.
But if they did do it their own, I just want to say that a little bit differently. If they did choose not to use our testing, that would be at their cost. That wouldn't be, we wouldn't pay for that.
Yeah.
Then lastly, I, I don't know if Julie or Kevin, you had heard this or, or Nicole, but I couldn't figure it out in listening today, but if this policy was not adopted. What are the ramifications on the school district?
Yeah, I think the attorney did speak to that right at the end, but OSHA, so we would be in violation of federal and state law. Right? Because that's where the ETS, Minnesota OSHA basically adopted. So OSHA could request data. Right now we have about four hours is the timeline to supply OSHA with data on our vaccination roster. And then our weekly testing. So if they found us in violation of those, if we weren't be able to provide that data, then they could cite citations, which would include fines. And I think the attorney mentioned anywhere from, I want to say seven thousand to seventy-five thousand, for example. Some of it being on each citation that they issue and then some of it also compounded by each day that you're not figuring out how to come in compliance. So there's a financial citations and fines that could be issued for violating OSHA.
I do recall the, the minimum seven thousand, the maximum seventy thousand, but it's not clear to me if the maximum is an aggregate.
Right.
So at least in my mind, it's not even clear what the ramifications are to the district on this policy either. So again, a lot of unanswered questions in this policy. And again, I know it was just thrust upon us within the last couple of days by the state and the federal government. So I appreciate all the work you did to try and answer these questions. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
Because there's very strict guidelines regarding data privacy.
Yeah.
And now they've got a requirement in here regarding medical data privacy. Do you have staff who can handle that? Are they knowledgeable on this? And because I'm sure this will mean a lot of extra work, is that, how will that be handled?
We sure do have staff. Yep. We can handle it. Well, we already do collect medical data already. So we have medical files that we keep separate from employee personnel files. I don't see that any different. I do see that as keeping that in the same confidential status as we do right now. So we do have staff that we can use in order to get those vaccination records. One thing that I've been working with Patrick on is having a system in our Skyward, which is a confidential HR payroll system. Our employees will be able to upload their vaccination status to that so that it's password protected. And we would be able to, in HR, only be the access to that data in order to see those vaccination records. That would make it a lot easier on us if it was electronic. So that's one thing that we're looking at.
So in looking at the first part of the policy under four A and four B, it talks about being fully vaccinated. And then in four B, it talks about the requisite number of doses. Who is determining the requisite number of doses and is that going to change and how will that be communicated?
Requisite doses, are you talking about a booster?
Right now it just says requisite doses, which I understand why it does, but I'm concerned about making sure it's clearly communicated to staff that should a number change? I mean, are we saying booster right now? Are we saying CDC comes up and says, you know, you need another booster? What?
Right.
Who's making that decision about requisite doses?
But it does say, Lucy, right, and be that the policy does not require booster vaccination.
Right. That's what I was just going to say.
Right. But requisite doses.
That's confusing.
Right.
Like the, the legal guy today, Christian, Christian Schaefer. He did say boosters are not included. So requisite doses are two doses for, for right now, I think.
Or Johnson Johnson is one.
And I think that, that's it. He's, he talked about the, they had to be FDA approved vaccinations. So he listed off three that were acceptable.
Didn't rule out the fact that there could be others.
Yes.
And then what I understood from the was that booster shots aren't necessary to fulfill this policy, but should be recorded. So I don't know if that idea is because things are shifting. I'm not sure of that, but it's just the initial course, whether it's one or two of the main three was what he was talking about.
So right now we would be asking for information on those doses. In other words, an employee would be filling in. I'm trying to think of the fields that we included in the system, but the dates of the vaccine, the type of the vaccine. So we would be tracking, there's also room for additional information so that if, if and when the policy did change and if let's say boosters were a part of it, so then a third shot or vaccine would be required. Then we would have to update the, well, I'd have to send out more information to the employee, update the policy if that was the case and get that out to employees so that we're tracking that. So I would envision that would be our responsibility to make sure that we're communicating any changes to that. Right now I would be going with the fully vaccinated as it was stated legally, but then that the boosters are not part of this implementation, but I would be tracking if people were putting in their boosters, I would have that information in that report.
So under number nine, under face coverings, it's a very detailed list about the qualifications of face coverings. How do these align to our current practices and policy, not policy? What's the term we're talking about before Kevin? Resolution, yes. How is it aligned to our current resolution? So is this going to up the requirements for face masks for employees? Because I don't think our current resolution says two layers.
No, I, when I read it, I see that it, it does not, if you read the whole thing through. There, there are quite a few that would, would qualify.
Right. But our current resolution doesn't describe the face coverings in this detail. Right?
Well, and I'll just say that if this, okay, so then I can go back to part two scope, if this policy or any subception of this policy conflicts with another school district's policy.
But we don't have a policy. Great. Okay.
This policy will be followed.
Right.
And it, it does not conflict with practice that we have right now.
But in the clarification, in the, the event we read today. Must completely cover nose and mouth. Must fit snug, face shields or the cover under the chin thing, not allowed. It's got to completely cover your nose and your mouth.
And we have teachers currently using face shields and other things. And so this is going to change.
That would change it.
What staff would be allowed to, to wear. Pretty quickly here. I just want to make sure.
They could use the clear thing only on a mask that fits securely over their nose and their mouth.
It can, and it can.
Okay, so.
No light.
I would be happy to reread this, but I'm seeing something different and maybe it's because it's eight forty-five, but I, I see acceptable face coverings include clear face coverings or cloths based with a clear plastic panel.
But it can have a clear plastic panel, but not a face shield and it has to completely cover your nose and mouth.
So we'll, we'll make sure that we, we look at that as well.
We no longer have a universal masking policy. Am I saying that correctly? Would that mean though, because of policy four ninety-one, that then unvaccinated staff would still be required to do the weekly testing and still be required to wear the face mask?
If this is in place.
Correct. I would also anticipate that even though the universal masking policy may not be part of our COVID protocols, I would anticipate people could continue wearing face masks regardless of the vaccination status. So there could also be staff in the buildings that are still wearing a mask, even if they've had their vaccination series, including a booster.
But they wouldn't be required.
No, but I would anticipate you'd probably still have people wanting to voluntarily wear their mask.
But that's probably consistent with the fact that the majority of our staff and teachers already are vaccinated.
And some would probably continue wearing it regardless. Yeah.
All right. Well, you guys have whittled down my list, so I won't have to give you many here. But I think the important thing to remember is what this is called, emergency temporary standards. So I think I've heard people talk about, well, this is this thing that will keep us years doing this. And I think we need to really look at that temporary wordage. And I too am wondering about the, the district universal masking resolution in conjunction with four ninety-one. The, today on the seminar, there was this idea that people that weren't vaccinated and did the weekly testing would have to do the mask thing and they'd be kind of seen by everybody as kind of identified that way. But currently, because we do have the universal mask resolution. Everybody's wearing them. So you wouldn't know, right?
Correct.
So I guess, you know, for consideration on how this hopefully temporary thing plays with our universal masking resolution. It could work in conjunction. We could really discuss how that might play out. I know this is, you know, it's complicated. I mean, it's some complicated. And then I think Barb, you answered my question about is there an end date for policy four nine, four ninety-one? And would it, would that, that was, I think you said, because I have resented by the review of the Department of Health or CDC, but you said something else.
I, I did read what we have in our policy, do you mean?
Yeah.
And, and that says that we sorry, it, that we have this requirement. As long as, as long as the ETS is legally enforceable against the school district.
And I think the, the other comment that maybe I'm going a little bit out on a limb or, or my skews has been said is I got the feeling from the session today and from other things I've read is I, I think that there's this like, you know, this, the stick thing that, you know, we're going to be. thing that, you know, we're going to be punitive, and I really did not get that feeling from, from the session, that it was more of let's try to work together, we got this thing that's been now brought forward by, and approved by the Sixth Circuit Court. Who knows what the Supreme Court's going to do, but that we're going to try to work with people to make this happen. I mean, I didn't get the feeling like it's going to be a punitive thing. I don't know, Nicole, if you.
No, I agree, and I think relationships with the union are very important when we talk about what you just said, so that would be a main goal of mine, is to really work with union leadership that Paul brought up, and figure out ways that we can work with staff. We've done a really good job of it, actually, with ever since this started, there was a lot of concern and angst over coming back to school, and we worked through a lot of different accommodation issues that staff had, and I felt we did a really good job in partnership, so I feel the same way.
I mean, I do want to just say you, you said something regarding end date, that it would be rescinded by the Department of Health, but this isn't coming from the Department of Health. So I just want to make that distinction. Are there any other comments?
Thanks, Nicole.
Thanks.
Thank you, Nicole, for all your work on this.
Of course, yep, thanks, guys.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
By Julie.
Second.
Seconded by Kevin. Discussion.
I think we've had enough discussion.
Question.
Well, I'll start off. I have really struggled with this. I really wish we could have waited until the Supreme Court made their ruling. This is a requirement from a federal agency. This did not go through Congress and was not passed into law and signed by the president, and so it's setting a very new precedent, honestly, that I, I find very concerning. I think OSHA has exceeded its authority, which is why it's before the Supreme Court. I do want to be clear that my issue with this is, as you can see, I've really struggled with it. It's really regarding the fact that this is coming from a federal agency. I am fully vaccinated, I've had my booster. I happily share that, though. I'm not being required to share that, and so I, I feel like when I'm stating my concerns and just feel like I need to share this with the board. I, I'm concerned because we are elected to represent the voices in our community. We know the issues here in our district. Not an agency in Washington DC. I don't think this meets the need. I think it's over eighty percent, maybe eighty-five percent of our teachers and staff are vaccinated. So this doesn't really address, I think, a lot of the issues that we are elected to address. So I just really wanted to make that distinction and share why, why this is so concerning to me. I, you know, I think I respect everyone's views on this, and everyone will vote on this, and, but I will say, I, I really have struggled with the idea that approving this is essentially acquiescing to this mandate from a federal agency that is not even a health agency. So I just wanted to share that with all of you. Are there any other comments? Kevin?
A little bit kind of to Paul, to your about the Hill Mary kind of question, and I can't answer the Hill Mary question, but I do know that many of the private colleges are adopting this type of thinking as well, so you know, I, all this stuff is very conflicting, but we do we do, these are uncharted times, these are times we haven't been through before, and you know, hopefully we have the wisdom to make it through this, and hopefully we have the ability to rally the Zephyr community to and again, hopefully this is a very short-lived thing, if I'm reading the research, that it's going to be pretty quick and, and over, so that's my thoughts.
Stacy, I appreciate your comments and feel there are other ways that we as board members and members of our, we can advocate for change on overstep of authority in this case. And I think, look, as I'm most concerned about our kids in our classrooms and the potential for fines and losing instructional dollars, which we don't have enough of to our kids to fines that I don't feel comfortable paying. But I think we can advocate in other ways for change. But for right now, I think passing this policy is in the best interest of our students in order to keep the funds, the limited funds that we have available in the classroom to instructional needs.
I'm sure I have a couple comments, and thank you, Kevin, thank you, Lucy, for your thoughts. You know, I don't know about you guys, but this makes me angry in respect that this is being thrust upon us by the federal government and the state government. Now, I didn't sign up to be a member of the Department of Health, I signed up to be a member of the Board of Education from Matamita Schools. And I agree with Stacy's comment, this is I think this is an overreach of authority, frankly. But rather than look at it as a burden, I think we can perhaps take on this challenge and look at it as an opportunity. An opportunity to stand up for the employees of this district and protect our district at the same time. Again, this is, I echo the comments, this isn't a debate about COVID, it's not a debate about the the merits of a vaccine. I'm vaccinated, again. But I was, I'm vaccinated by choice, I'm not vaccinated by mandate. But and so I chose to tell you that, and I chose to get, to get vaccinated. I think adopting this policy infringes upon the individual rights of every employee that we have within this district. And as a board, given what the feds and the state are imposing upon us, I think we have a duty to protect the rights of every employee in this district. Their individual right to make their own personal healthcare choice. I'm afraid this policy would set a dangerous precedent. I echo Stacy's comment with respect to that. I think we do not know what the fines are. But we also do not know what the potential for liability is by having this policy in place. That's not been addressed, as far as I know. I think it can expose us to discriminatory actions. And I believe it's a culture killer. I think that the employees, we have a great we have a great employees here, there's a camaraderie around with staff. You, that is so important to doing their jobs and doing it well, and imposing something like this, I think is going to create perhaps divide and impact the culture that we, that we currently enjoy here, so I would urge all of us to dig deep into your gut and take a stand for the employees of this district. This hasn't even gone into effect as far as it's being challenged by the Supreme Court or the United States government as we sit here today. So it may be, it may be found to be unconstitutional and to associate ourselves with something that may be deemed unconstitutional. That's also something that we also should consider as well, so I appreciate your thoughts, and I hope you dig deep and think through this with the addition of the comments that I've made. Thank you.
I'm just going to reiterate that there are implications to not adopting this policy this evening. We are so, so Nicole, can you help me again with dates? I think that Minnesota OSHA said they would not they would not cite districts who show a good faith effort to follow the ETS, even if we don't meet exactly meet deadlines. I think the deadline, has the deadline is today the deadline for adopting the policy, right? So I just want you to know that the reason we, we put into this policy specifically was that we would not, we would only follow this if legally required, or if it were going to be legally enforceable against the school district, so I just, I just need to reiterate that one more time, because there would be implications. We did consult with the attorney if we did not pass this this evening, so.
Any further discussion? Kelly?
I would agree with everything that has been said. I struggled with even coming here tonight for this reason. I asked Barb a lot of questions ahead of time. I think that this is, like Paul said, I don't claim to be a health expert. I claim to have a lot of background in education, and I think that what this is asking us to do, I was a civics teacher for a long time, though, and so I struggle a little bit with the the unconstitutional nature of this. I also, though, like everyone has said, I have no problem saying that I'm vaccinated. I have no problem honestly wishing that maybe more people were vaccinated, but I don't feel like I get to make that choice for someone. And so I want to represent all of the community of Matamita, and I have really struggled with us having this conversation because this is not about me, this is not about Stacy, this is, this is also something for us that's put us in a very awkward place, and I think what Barb is saying is this puts us in a place, though, though, if we do not pass this, what are the ramifications for our district, and we're also, are we putting the cart before the horse? I have struggled with this because I feel very torn, and I honestly I don't look forward to, to voting on this in a moment. I really wish that we were not making this vote right now tonight.
And sure, to Barb's point, what is the definition of good faith effort? I mean, in my mind, this is a good faith effort. We're discussing this, we're evaluating it. The fact that we don't make a decision just tonight. I mean, I, just before I got here, I got word that there was another, there was a school district in Minnesota that did, they tabled it. I'm not saying that we table it. But in their mind, they must have decided that that's, that was at least a good faith effort, because they don't have all the answers. So I guess, has there been any discussion? What is the definition of a good faith effort?
Well, I, again, I'll just say we consulted with our attorney and who has recommended that we adopt this the way it's written now, and and did use that as an example of a good faith effort, so I think, I didn't go back and, and ask, we, I, we even asked, can we wait? So I would want you to know we waited as long as we could. This, there are districts that adopted this in December, anticipating in some form of this policy, even though MSBA hadn't come out with their model policy, there were other attorneys who had written model policies, and they adopted something along these lines. We waited for the MSBA policy, we waited. And so I, I will just tell you that that's, that's why we're recommending what we're recommending.
I wish our attorney was here tonight to answer some questions.
I did talk to our attorney, and I got the same response. I would say I, I I disagree in the fact that there are probably other ways to show a good faith effort, so I, you know, if, if he were here, I think we could have talked through that a bit, a bit more. I don't know if that was a realistic option, but I, I I understand your frustration, especially still having so many outstanding questions. Are there any, is there any further discussion?
Sorry, just one last item. I think it's important to note that I did mention it earlier, but I I received multiple emails over the weekend from employees of this district, and none of them which spoke tonight. That this is perhaps a game changer in their mind, and so several, several employees voiced concern. So, thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no.
No.
Is that three?
The most.
I voted no. I voted no. Did you vote no?
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have to go into closed meeting. I have to make, take a motion to do that. Do you have a motion to close meeting?
So move.
In a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, we'll be closing the meeting now, and when we do open it up, we'll pretty much just be adjourning, so we'll give you time to to, to leave the room. So thank you for being here tonight.